I move to come out. I move to come out of executive session and resume the meeting at 6:51 PM.
Can I get a second? It has been moved and seconded to come out of executive session and remove and resume the meeting. Is there any further discussion? Any opposition? Seeing none, the meeting reconvenes at 6:52 PM. Now, could I now have a motion of determination?
I move to support the superintendent's decision that denies grievance number 01-2020.
May I get a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded. Can I roll call vote? Could you restate the motion, please? Yes. The motion is to support the superintendent's decision that denies grievance number 01-0202022. Todd Gebler.
Yes.
Tristan Givon.
Yes.
Mitch Morp.
Yes.
Melanie Board.
Yes.
Blossom Teal Olsen.
Yes.
Motion passed.
I move to adjourn the special meeting.
I second that.
I need a louder voice. I don't have to worry about this. All right, this meeting of Sika School Board is called to order at 6:54 PM. Let's salute. Actually, this evening, we have a lovely guest to say our pledge of allegiance, Mrs. Santana. Would you please come forward? Thank you, Mrs. Santana. That was beautiful. Kiana. The Sika School Board acknowledges that our schools are located on the ancestral homelands of the Klinkit people who have lived in Shitka since time immemorial. We express our deepest respect and gratitude for our indigenous neighbors, the Klinkit, for enduring care and protection of Klinkit Ani. Moving on to item number five, could I have a motion to approve the proposed agenda and consent agenda? Oh, yes, we do need a roll call. I missed four. Todd Gebler.
Here.
Tristan Givon.
Here.
Melanie Board.
Here.
Mitch Morp.
Here.
Blossom Teal Olsen. And Felix Myers.
Here.
All are present. I'm thankful that you're here. Keep me on the, keep me going. All right, now moving on to item number five. Could I have a motion to approve the proposed agenda and consent agenda?
I move to approve the proposed agenda and consent agenda as presented.
My notes say that. A second. It's been moved and seconded. May I please get a motion to, I move to amend. Let's see, can I get a motion to approve the amendment to the main motion?
I move to amend the motion to remove items 13C, temporary wage scales.
Can I get a second?
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. To, my notes are horrible, I'm sorry. A motion has been made to amend the proposed agenda to remove agenda item 13C, temporary employee wage to scale. Is there any public comment? Any board comment? Motion on the table is to amend the main motion to remove the agenda item 13C, temporary employing new wage to scales from the proposed agenda. Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion passes.
I move to approve the proposed, the proposed agenda and consent agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
I second that.
A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any public comment? Any board comment?
Can I comment on the one item? I just wanted to recognize on item 5C, which is on the consent agenda, the opening, the box of culturally responsive STEAM education for middle school MOA. I'd just like to commend staff on this. Cultural Program Director Jewel LeBlanc, you know, and partners such as Sika Tribe of Alaska. Also recognize the work of the former Cultural Program Director Nancy Douglas in moving this work forward. I think this is a great example of how district staff are going above and beyond to address some of our financial shortfalls or some of our budget crunch and, you know, just looking for additional ways to find money to give good programming to kids. This one is about culturally responsive STEAM education, bringing traditional ecological knowledge into, into our schools. So again, would like to commend staff from administration all down, the cultural program, Sika High School, Pacific High School, Blatchley Middle School, the areas of our school district that are moving this, this work forward with Sea Alaska Heritage Institute and Sika Tribe of Alaska. And I guess last but not least, thank you to Sea Alaska Heritage Institute for providing this opportunity for our students.
Thank you, Mr. Givon, for those comments, and I fully agree with your statement. Let's see. Moving on to, oh, we do have to vote. There was no opposition. The motion passes. Correct? So I was right? Okay, could that's, could I state that for the record? I was right. My apologies. I grew up with a helicopter mother and she spoke for me for half of my life, so usually I keep to myself. All right, moving on to item six, special reports, government to government. Do we have any government to government reports? Laquisha? Oh, man. Well, at least my eyes work. Going to tell that to my daughter. She told me I was almost 50. My eyes still work. So moving on to item number seven, recognitions. 7A, Halatzini Students of the Month. This is my most favorite time of this school board meeting. Can I speak why now? So, in meeting with Superintendent Hauser and Don, in one of our meetings, I had remarked that since Sika School District, we have amazing students with sports, DDF. We have a great number of students who have exceptional GPAs. We have honor band and honor choir and all of the above. But in looking back into my own history and my own experience going to school, I always felt that a lot of the students who were not on the basketball team or on the volleyball team or who ran track and field, who or who had the ability to sit up and speak in front of people, they still held the spirit of community and strength, and they gained their own perspective and voice in their own way. And I felt that education sometimes overlooked that. And while it's not, you know, nowadays, people say, we just give out participation awards. No, this is not it. Halatzini Student of the Month Award goes to students who uplift what we hear in Sika value and what makes our community so special. Because when we live here, I have experienced over and over the community that we have, the people that come together when we need it, they do come together, they do lift each other up. And we don't look at grade point averages, we don't look at, you know, if you were the fastest runner or your grade, you know, your points per game. You could tell I was in sports. Anyways, it is that spirit within community that creates a well-rounded community that is whole and that creates strength within itself. So the Student of the Month Award highlights just that, students who hold Halatzini within their heart and passes it on to others and creates within them that community that's like a love to celebrate. And, you know, we're raising the next generation of Sickins who go out into the world. And so this is why I love this time. So I'll give it over to Mr. Hauser.
Thank you very much. Madam President, we have some certificates here that we want to recognize. I'm going to go ahead and grab the certificates. I'm going to get this and we're going to bring some students up here. And luckily, we got a chance to hear from some of the students already when they were sharing some good things a little bit earlier, so. I'm just going to get the certificates. I'm actually going to hand out. So we're going to go ahead and recognize some students, so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Gebler.
Vivian is an eighth grader at Blatchell Middle School. She is kind and respectful to students and staff. She participates in student activities and athletics. Vivian constantly pursues excellence in her academic work and is always willing to help fellow students. We are proud to have Vivian as a student at Blatchell.
Angela Mabana, Sika High School, Halatzini Student of the Month. Come on down. Angela consistently demonstrates the core principles of Halatzin, responsibility, compassion, and engagement. Angela actively participates in class and is always engaged, no matter the topic or class. She always hands in her work on time and is a meticulous note taker. At, as a school citizen, Angela works well with all students and always has a kind word. Her smile and pleasant attitude are appreciated throughout the school. Angela is a great role model, and Sika High School is proud to have her as one of our students. Congratulations.
Neo Price, Keet Gushiheen, Halatzini Student of the Month. Neo is a fifth grade student in Mrs. Grant's classroom. Time and time again this year, Neo has shown incredible perseverance. No matter what obstacles Neo faces, he takes them on with a positive attitude, kindness, and pride in his work. Not only has Neo stayed 100% on top of his schoolwork, but he is always willing to help his classmates. He is an excellent example of the Keet Gushiheen core values, respectful, responsible, safe, and kind. We are so impressed with this student.
All right, Clover Snelling from Pacific High School. So Clover is the Student of the Month for October at Pacific High. Clover is a dedicated student, talented artist of many mediums, and a culture bearer for their Klinkit language heritage. They prepared an opening welcome for the tri-school Mary Palteola event at Mount Edgcombe High School on Indigenous Peoples' Day and presented Representative Palteola with a Klinkit paddle of their own design. The design include, included raven and eagle for balance as well as fish scales to celebrate Representative Palteola's commitment to the sustainability of our natural resources. Clover is an ambassador of our Pacific High School values and exemplifies perseverance, honesty, and stewardship both in and out of school.
Gonaschishha i adi, Clover Yuchet duasak. Thank you all for coming. My name is Clover. I was honored to have been asked to make a gift for Representative Palteola. I was given a blank paddle to work with and I started sketching right away. I started with the lovebirds. One side has eagle and the other has raven. Their beaks meet in the middle for a little kiss. In Klinkit culture, lovebirds represent balance. Above them, I painted crescent moons. These illustrate intention and empowerment. Moving down to the handle, I made shiny fish scales, an ode to Mary Palteola's work towards protecting our fish and our fisheries. And finally, the paddle itself, holding the date Palteola was sworn in at the base. The paddle is a symbol of moving forward, which I feel is especially predominant today. Ach tuhu alhikke, a chen gonashish. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, everyone. Clover, that was an amazing paddle. Your Klinkit is amazing as well. I'm envious. Moving on to 7B. We're recognizing the Sika High School cross-country team, cross-country team. Please come up. Do you want me to? The Sika High School Board's cross-country team was runner-up at the recent Division II State Championship in Anchorage. The girls' team placed fourth overall. Placing in the top 10, girls, Anna Prushion, first place Claire Mullin, second, and Claire Mullin, second place. Boys, Annan Wyland, fourth place. Silas Demart, fifth place. Trey Demart, eighth place. And Connor Hitchcock, ninth place. Congratulations.
But I would love to hear from a coach. Would you like to say?
So I love coaching because I love watching kids work really hard. And I love when it all comes together. And at state, it really came together for everybody. And it was super, super fantastic to watch Anna and Claire finish one-two with like a once in a lifetime for a coach to see that and just have it come together in a senior year was amazing. And then the boys to get second overall was also very, very awesome. Lots of seniors on the team, but we're excited for the future.
Some of you may or may not know, but oftentimes when we head up to state, our biggest competition is the private schools. And this year, Grace Christian, which is a private school in Anchorage, had been dominating almost everybody they raced. And I, I don't know if you guys all know this, but I had ran into the Grace Christian coach in the parking lot before the race, and she goes, oh, how are your boys doing? And I'm like, yeah, they're doing all right. And I don't think they knew we were coming because we were within two points of beating Grace Christian, who is the three-time state champ now. So it was just a testament to the kids and how they raced up there. It was so fun to watch.
And I would also like to say another round of applause for the coaches. The work that they do behind the scenes to make sure everything goes, you know, smooth and the students have the support. And it's really an amazing job that they do. So Jeremy Shaw, so thank you guys so much for everything. I really appreciate it. How about a round of applause? Students, how about a round of applause for your coaches? Yeah.
I'm a student and my favorite moment was, I think, at state, we all came across the line pretty tired and Dave goes, I just got a PR. And if you guys don't know, that's a really hard part to get a PR on, so I think.
I'm Anna Prushen and this was my first year having a whole girls' team. And so that was really fun.
I'm Connor and my favorite part was crossing the finish line and.
I'm James.
Congratulations, everyone. I'll wait while everyone exits the room. Kudos to them for waiting so long. They're amazing. I know, right? I was so excited. Someday, someday they will be. I have faith. All right, moving on to persons to be heard. Persons to be heard is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the board about a topic that is not on the agenda. As these are not agenda items, no board deliberation or action will occur in response. Questions or for clarification may be posed by board members. The board may choose to refer items to their superintendent or designee for further action. The standard time limit for comments will be three minutes, unless otherwise stated by the board president with consent of the board. A timer is used and a sound will indicate when time expires. All comments must be respectful and charges or complaints against specific employees are not permitted per Alaska State statute. Members of the public are referred to Board Policies 1312.1312.21312.3 and associated administrative regulations, as well as the Board Bylaws 9323A. For information about how to lodge complaints, speakers are are also asked to please state their full name for the record prior to speaking. Are there any persons to be heard tonight? Seeing them. Moving on. To item nine, school highlights. Sika High School.
Hi. We'll pull up a slideshow. Perfect. So we're going to just go over some highlights from October with this being November 1st. And starting with who we just recognized, our cross-country teams, who were amazing and you heard lots of great things about them. I'd just like to reiterate that they're a great group on campus. They're campus leaders in the classroom, in the hallways, on the sports fields. And I know we recognized Coach Smith and Coach Strong and they do a fantastic job. And I will try to highlight all of our activities tonight and what's been going on right now. But I also want to give a big thanks to Rich Krupa, our activities director, because all of this travel and all of these, the logistics of the home things and everything that's going on right now, he's doing a wonderful job keeping us on track and getting the kids where they need to be and on time. And it's a, it's a lot and he's working really hard and we appreciate that. So. Right now, actually, right now, the region volleyball tournament has started at Sika High. The first round is tonight. And we're playing Mount Edcom. Coach Zady Allen is leading that. This is a best of three series. So tomorrow night will be at Mount Edcom at 7:00 PM. We recently recognized our seniors on the volleyball team. We have three this year, Ava Brady, Andrea, and Michelle Winger. And so that's going on. Swimming, I'm super excited. They did great at Regions this past weekend and they are heading to the state championships this next weekend. The thing about swimming that you may not realize is that swimmers don't have different divisions. So cross-country, for example, they have three different divisions by size of school and we compete in Division Two. And so that's why you see more like, it's amazing that Anna won state. She's Division Two state champion. There are actually three different division state champions. In swimming, there's one division. So we compete against all the big schools. And so when you see the student athletes, especially in swimming, you're seeing them compete against everyone in the entire state. And so we're wishing a big luck to the six swimmers that we're sending up there. Coach Divine and Tracy Herring are doing a great job with that group. And we actually had Emma Gassman was amazing this past weekend. She won the Hundred Back and the Hundred Fly. And so we have big wishes for that group. The girls' team finished third place at Regions and the boys' teams finished fourth. But they're heading to state this weekend at Bartlett, so we wish them all the best. We were very busy this past weekend hosting the Sika Slam Wrestling Tournament. All of Southeast was here in Sika for that. Our school was full. Almost every classroom, somebody was sleeping in. And Coach Mike Callahan is leading the charge in that. We had two overall winners in the weight divisions, Evander Elixman and Kai Davis. And we had several other really top finishers. Wrestling teams on its way to ACS this weekend for a really big tournament in Anchorage. So we wish them luck. And then DDF, they were off this past weekend, but they're heading to Haynes next weekend. And I would list every winner in the last meet, which was in Metlekatla, but the meeting would be, need to be in like another hour. So, well, I think we're going to wait until we have like the region meet results and then the state stuff because they are yet again dominating all other performers. And certainly not least, the music program. I just have to commend Andrew Hames. And first off, the learning curve that he came back into, coming back into the classroom and just the stamina this guy has is amazing. So we recently had our fall concert in the pack. The students marched in the Alaska Day Parade and we also just participated in Honor Festival. And we're about to send a group of students to All-State Music. I will recognize those students. So it's Tyler Address, Theo Everson, Justin Hames, Emily Blackman, Quentin Newsom, and then Josh Gluth as an alternate. So busy, busy, busy for activities. We also, Clover's paddle was incredible. That was actually a gift from all three high schools to Mary Palatola. We very much enjoyed the joint assembly over at Mount Edcom. It's the first assembly since I've been in Sika that we had all together as one. And we left there feeling like it was really successful and we enjoyed that. The next bit of the slideshow may seem like a Felix Myers slideshow because he was such a part of everything. But as was mentioned earlier, we were able to again send delegates to the Student Government Convention over in Wasilla. And our two students absolutely dominated. So not that I'm surprised, I'm not. But we really have a lot going for us in this realm. And it's going to be exciting to see what happens next because so Kylie, as the Region Five delegate, will continue in that role. And then, but Felix, as the, I don't know if you understand what the SBEED rep is, but that is actually the student rep on the state school board that will meet in June. So he is the junior rep this year and will move into the senior rep position next year and actually be a voting member on the state school board. So congratulations. Really. It was, it was super nice to see us participate in that. Again, it had been several years since we were able to send students to this. And so we don't know where the spring convention is yet, but maybe we never know. It might be close to home. We'll see. So, good job. And then, so it's spirit week this week. And we had, we celebrated Halloween yesterday. Today was Disney Day. So we all had our Mickey Mouse ears on. And then tomorrow is going to be Pink Out to recognize the Breast Cancer Awareness Month that just ended in October. So lots of fun. And I had to throw in that congratulations, Mr. McCarty has been named the Region Five Assistant Principal of the Year.
You didn't know we were going to be doing this and purposely left him off of the earlier because I figured he'd probably make some excuse by having to be at the high school while region volleyball is going on. So we just wanted to take this moment to recognize you, Tyler. Congratulations.
Well, I mean, PJ, but like it takes a team and it's nice to be recognized. But it's the entire school, it's the student, it's the rest of the leadership. It's very nice, but it's, we're a team effort and so.
Had to throw that last slide in. Ms. McCarty does a great job for us. Even when he's on crutches, he's been on crutches for his, we hope your knee heals soon. We really hope your knee heals soon, but he's still, he's doing a good job. We're just bringing the stuff to him now. So. That's, that's it. Does anybody have any questions? And if you don't mind, I'm going to go to the volleyball game. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Hello, good to see you all. I'm going to let a video play, our highlights for the school board meeting. So while Tyler's getting that going, I think, I think the biggest highlight for me personally is we have hired on a substitute cook for our breakfast and lunch program, which is fantastic. I spent almost a month doing the breakfast and lunch program as a chef would. And I have learned firsthand the amount of work that goes into that in terms of menu planning, grocery lists, doing the shopping, doing the ordering. And so it was really nice for me to be a part of the whole system, to be able to learn about what it takes. We've had an AmeriCorps, that has been an AmeriCorps position for a number of years. And for the last few years, it's been, we haven't been able to get an AmeriCorps to fill the position. And I think primarily that's because of how big the position is. It started out just as a lunch program in a small kitchen within our old building before the remodel. And during the remodel, we expanded the kitchen into a large commercial kitchen, but the staffing has stayed the same. And so it really, and then we added the breakfast component to our school breakfast and lunch program. And so it is definitely a feat to be able to do that day to day and week to week. And so I am thrilled. Today was the first, I've been, I've been telling the new chef that it's gradual release and she did breakfast all by herself today. And I was just kind of off to the side during lunch production, doing some of my other work in case they needed consultation. But she's working with four students that we have in the cooking class. And they're just doing really great. So it's really nice to have someone else in the kitchen. But it was, we, it was very important to us to keep that program going in the spirit that we always have in terms of the from scratch meals, using as much from our school garden as possible. And so it's a huge highlight to have somebody in that position now. And I have a big stack of backlog to work as principal that now I'm going to start sifting through. And so I don't know if that's a highlight, but it's really nice to be back in my office. So last month, well, I guess I should start with last spring. The NEA Alaska President, Tom Claymar. He came around, they, when there's a new president, they usually do circulate around to the schools in the different regions. He came by Pacific High School, spent some time and walked away from that experience, wanting to learn more about Pacific High School, but also wanting to celebrate the program that we have at Pacific High School. So he reached out and asked if we would mind having a film crew come down this fall and capture some of what we do because he acknowledged that it's a very unique program. It's a unique program within the state as well as within Sika. And so there were three days in September that a couple of folks from their marketing department, I guess I want to say, they had someone who was filming and then another person who was interviewing came and spent three days at the school with students and with staff. And, and so they put this video together. It just went live yesterday on the NEA Alaska website. And so I thought this, they did a fantastic job encapsulating the spirit of what we do at Pacific High School and how unique our program is. And so I wanted to share this with you all for the highlights tonight. Sika is a place where life is purposeful. We're active in subsistence as a lifestyle, but we're also surrounded by culture. We're on clinket, on ee. It just seems as though what we do each day has a purpose towards our future. My name is Mandy Summer and I'm the principal of Pacific High School. Aside from the principal, I can be a cook. I can be a counselor. Sometimes I can step into the role of a pseudo-parent.
My name is Matt Groan and I'm a high school social studies teacher. I teach grades nine through 12 here at Pacific High School in Sika. The mission of Pacific High School is to take learners from every community and help them access the future that they want. We meet every learner where they are. We help them grow. We help them access the resource that they need. Or sometimes we help them graduate and go right on to the future. At Pacific High School, we offer a really wide range of classes. We do everything from my Alaska Studies Subsistence Class, where we catch, grind, filet, smoke, jar salmon and go through the entire process. A lot of students want to fish. A lot of students want to go out and engage in all those activities, but they don't have the resource, they don't have the mentorship. And so it provides that opportunity for students to really engage in a constructive way to spend that downtime. And sometimes that even translates into a career where a student goes, I really like fishing. Maybe I should do this forever. In the afternoon, I have a government class and we are fortunate to have really involved government here in Sika from both the tribal perspective and the local perspective. And so we really get to kind of run with what students want. We get to really maximize the resource that is here in Sika and really provide a truly place-based education.
My name is Clover. I am a senior and I go to Pacific High School. Pacific High School is meaningful to me because Pacific brings in so much community Pacific High School is meaningful to me because Pacific brings in so much community from, like the culture here in Sitka, like I'm klingit, so I get to still experience my culture within school. Pacific High is your family and is a family for a lot of students.
The garden came to be just as one small raised bed box in the front of the school and it was used for English classes. And then students became really interested in planting seeds and watching them grow. 10 years later, we have a 24 by 48 foot greenhouse going up and we're harvesting produce to eat in our school lunch programs.
I am Aubrey Rose Leroux. I am a junior and I go at Pacific High School. Pacific High School is special because the staff here, they're more connected with the students more than from my experience from other schools. I chose the gardening program because I actually never learned how to garden. When I first started doing it, I was actually proud of myself of like learning how to like plant carrots or just like plant flowers, potatoes, chard, kale, and it was really fun.
The produce that we grow in the garden, we grow a lot of greens because we serve salad and wraps. We serve, or we grow a lot of root crops, potatoes, garlic. Turnips this year, we'll do onions in the future. Staple crops that have been grown here and been successful here in Southeast Alaska and that we know that we're going to use in our school lunch program.
My hope for the future is that our model continues. I hope we can service more students. If we could also have place-based school all the way down to K through 12, I think that would be fantastic. I definitely appreciate traditional education. I just like having those parallel with other options for learners that don't necessarily fit into that mold. And I hope that those models are accessible.
My hope for our students is that they become knowledgeable and empowered and community-minded so that they become contributing citizens.
The only other piece that I would, I'd like to add, and part of it is just because I do need to go. You know, another highlight for us, we just wrapped up this government class that Matt talked about in the video. Tristan Gavon helped us out with that and was an integral part of that class. And seeing where the students want to take that class, after having some very intentional conversations about what their role can be, both within their school and within their community. And so I know that it's coming up for first reading that we're talking about in addition of a Pacific High rep to the school board. This is something that we've been working on for a number of years. I, and the, the time is, is ripe, I guess, in the spirit of gardens and harvesting and that type of thing. So, you know, I just want to appreciate Tristan and all the time that he's spent helping us get that moving forward. And I'm really looking forward to seeing where this, this may go. And having the opportunity for Pacific High School students to also participate in dialogue and provide some insight and feedback as well. And so I know that's coming up later, but I just wanted to express some appreciation for that right now. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mandy. Moving on to item 10, reports and presentations, 10A Cultural Department. Good evening. Welcome. Now, hello. Anshkunukhuhatduasak. My klingit name is Anshkunukhu and my English name is Jewel Blanc and I'm the cultural director for the district. And on the agenda, it said Jessica Christensen would be with me today, but I'll get to this a little bit later. We were not ready yet with some of our updates, so we're hoping to come back in December and do that. So I have my partner in crime here today. If you want to introduce yourself.
Chukanyuchatduasakchaknachatsiti chukanedi ayarchet kixarierichatsiti chitkukyechati. My English name is Lakritsha. I am the STA Cultural Resources Education and Employment Director, which means I get to co-direct the Sitka Native Education Program alongside Jewel Blanc. So today we work closely together on everything we're about to share, which I thought why it's important to bring her here today. And every time I do updates, a lot of what we do wouldn't be possible without the partnership with the Sitka Tribe of Alaska. And so I just want to honor that and recognize that every time I get a chance to speak. And also honor and recognize that anything that I'm saying today is because of all the hard work that went in the last 10 years with the previous cultural director, with Sitka Tribe of Alaska and all their work. And I just get to be here and support that work and further it by what we hear from our students and families. So with that, I'll get into some of the grants that we currently are working with to support our work. The first one is the IEA Title VI Grant. And that grant currently pays for our two cultural paras, one at Bearinoff and one at Blatchley. It also pays for the language teacher, Robbie Littlefield, at Blatchley Sitka High. And most recently, Pacific High has been added to that. The other grant we have is the Margaret Cargill Philanthropy Grant, the MACP Grant, which is wrapping up. And hopefully in December where we can come back and share more about that, because that was a pretty significant grant we had in our district. And so we'll have a video to share with you and some updates on that later on. The other grant we work with is STEPS. And that one is a pre-K through 12th grade, commonly known as the Cradle to Career Grant. So it really works on fostering healthy communities and healthy districts that work together in collaboration with the community. And so with that, we've been able to have Culture Responsive in Services. This last August, we were hosting a creating a sense of belonging in service that Mr. Hauser talked about earlier this fall. It supports the Early Childhood Coalition revitalizing family engagement events, which was pretty, I should say, mitigated through the last two years. So we are now trying to get back to in-person events. It supports post-secondary work and social and emotional learning curriculum support. And so we get to support the, all the schools in our district with implementing strategies, tools, resources, practices to help further their social emotional learning curriculum. We also work with the Lhasa Council on the Arts Grant, and there's three under that. The first one is New Visions, which this year will be sending our administrative team, or a few of them, to the Kodiak Arts Retreat specifically for admin. We have the Youth Cultural Heritage Grant, which had supported two of our camps over the summertime. And we were able to bring in guest instructors and have a robust summer programming. And then Artists in the Schools, we used to do that pre-2020 and I guess pre-2019 and are now bringing it back into our schools with the collaboration of the Sitka Fine Arts Camp. And then last is the Sea Alaska Heritage Institute. And they support the Culture Responsive Steam at the Middle School Grant, which that's not the right name, but that was my quick notes. The Traditional Ecological Knowledge at Pacific High and Sitka High and Box of Treasures, which supports our traditional arts teachers at Sitka High and Pacific High. And I'll go into these a little bit further in the next few slides. But I do want to note, if you know me at all, I do not like wordy slides. And so it's really hard to not put a lot of words on this because we were doing so much pre-K through post-secondary. So I just want to make note that this was very hard to trim down what we're doing. And I did not want to trim down. I wanted to make sure we were capturing all of it. But I still trying to not have 20 slides in this, did not capture everything. So I apologize if I have missed anything. So in school, we have a lot of different programs and different happenings. First is Wu Chin, which the last few years was mitigated. It was remote, virtual. And so this is a first year back doing a morning class. That's really exciting. We have our traditional art classes with Pacific High and Sitka High students, which previously mentioned in the last slide, is funded by Sea Alaska Heritage Institute. And with those traditional arts classes, we are offering dual credit so students can participate in UAS credits and high school credits. There's a collaboration with Sitka High's Fab Lab with Mr. Charlie Skolka and Mike Vieira. The collaboration with Bearinoff signage, which is also with Mr. Charlie. And that's in the works currently to have more form line and improve their signage in the front of their school. There is a cultural steam teacher at Blatchley Middle School, also funded by SHI. And this position had been happening the last few years. And so now Kelly Buckston's in it furthering that work and continuing it. There's two traditional ecological knowledge teachers. One is at Pacific High and one is at Sitka High. And in this new realm and secondary, it's been really exciting working with Caitlin Woolsey because she was the previous steam teacher at Blatchley and then moved up to Sitka High. And with her previous experience, getting to dive into the district and see what teachers' needs are, we came up with a few goals together of what would we like to see happen through that position. And so we are working together to create a cultural specialist request form because often we have teachers, admin, any staff really wanting to bring in people or bring in lessons or activities without much substance. And while it is through good intent, sometimes we miss the purpose of why we want to bring people in. And so this request form is going to help staff really analyze, why do I want this person or this thing in my classroom? What will that help my students do? So that's what we're working on. And in tandem, we're also working on a cultural specialist agreement. Once you bring in people into your classroom, it's sometimes hard to figure out what your role as a teacher is. And oftentimes for the specialist coming in, it's hard for them to understand what their role is. So this agreement form would be a mutual contract that would really help both parties understand what is their role in that classroom with students. And then lastly, we are working on the klingit language being embedded throughout the school throughout Sitka High. So that's exciting to start seeing that come together, which is a part of the strategic planning process. We also have a language teacher who is Robbie Littlefield and has been with us for a very long time now. And she is teaching sixth through 12th grade. As I mentioned earlier, she has taken on now teaching at Pacific High as well. So Blatchley Middle School, Sitka High and Pacific High. And then we have a PH at Pacific High School Life Skills Classes, Form Line, Carving, Tool Making and Beading. So they get those every Friday. We're also working on a cultural scope and sequence, developing it currently. And so that's really taking all the big areas of traditional knowledge and breaking it down into how are students accessing this throughout their career in the district? So when they enter pre-K even, what are they receiving and how does that build on throughout 12th grade? And one thing that's really common in our culture is it spirals. It's never linear. It's never learners learn that and now you can do this and that. However, we think it's important to start westernizing it or linearizing it so we don't lose really big elements. And we've seen that with different teaching grade level teams who leave the district with all this knowledge. Once they leave, it's gone. And so this is an effort to have the district own more of what is being taught culturally and what age and allow it to live on beyond just a group of teachers who own that. So I'm really excited to see that come together. And we've been working on it for the last two years. It's not an easy project, so stay tuned. We're also working on art kit. Oh, sorry, I know I'm speaking wrong. We have art kits that are kindergarten through fifth grade. And these art kits, in lieu of not having art teachers at every building, are helping teachers access the arts and enable them to teach it in a way that is productive and connects to their English, language arts and math curriculum. And so it's allowing many doors to open that weren't there before as far as students accessing the arts. And we've, we'll share more about this in December as well. But I think we've heard a lot of feedback from teachers on how they can use these art kits without a lot of art experience and their students are getting a really robust art lesson that does connect to their curriculum. And then the last thing that we're working on, not even the last thing on the slide, the last thing is a active website, Arts Culture Technology website. And this is a digital library, is how I like to explain it, that teachers or community members or students can access to get resources from digital to physical. So it's very robust as well. And we'll share more about that in December. You can go to the next slide. Okay, so more in-school programs and happenings. We have grade level and department collaborations happening with the cultural department. Specifically too, I wanted to highlight was UAS and BMS Shop Class Field Trip, which is allowing shop students at Blatchley Middle School to explore this post-secondary career. And they get to go through UAS and tour around their CTEs departments. And then we also have a second grade klingit celebration in the works. That was happening for many years prior to 2020. And this is going to be the first year we're getting it back up and going, similar to how it was in the past. We've also been working with Reach Homeschool. They've been, I want to say on the outskirts, but more so through transitions, just not always involved. So I feel really excited about involving our homeschool students as well and what we're doing in the cultural department. We also, and I'm very, very, very excited about this one. We were able to send four of our Sitka High School math teachers to attend the Ravens Tail Weaving in Juneau. And it's very exciting, yes, because we haven't necessarily had a full team like this ever in the district, be able to go and attend some things outside of their department, but then have them have the chance to see how they could bring it into their department. And so I heard from SHI today that there was really great conversations happening with the math teachers of what this looks like and how they can make lessons around this Ravens Tail Weaving. So I'm really proud and happy that we were able to send these math teachers to this conference or this training. And then we have SHS, PHS and MEHS Assembly for Indigenous Peoples' Day, which we already went into, so I won't go into that one too much. And then we have our cultural paras. And I did want to highlight what they are doing, mainly because we are seeing that our Title VI Grant funding is being significantly reduced due to families not signing the form and the lower enrollment. And so when that happens, we are losing money. And this money directly goes towards the cultural paras and language teachers. So I think it's really important to highlight what they are doing district-wide to support all students. So specifically math and ELA support. They help with cultural integration and co-creation support. They are culture class instructors, so they help with after-school programming. There are family support. They often can connect with families when staff can't, or they can be a bridge from home to school. And they can share a lot of insight on our, some of our families, our lost Canadian families specifically in various capacities. So in tandem with that, they are social emotional support for many of our students, especially the fifth to sixth grade transition. A lot of the kiddos who have seen Miss Erin Roff Carr in their second through fifth grade after-school class go to middle school and see her face. And it's always been a really comforting, reassuring thing when they see her. And we've seen that every single year. And then lastly, they have traditional knowledge and language support that they share with staff. And then we have an AmeriCorps position who is working specifically on the klingit language projects with Kikishin. She's an intervention support, so helping with math and a little bit of reading. And then she's also a culture class aide, so she helps out in our after-school programming. And she's also supporting our website as she has a degree in user design. So we're using those skill sets to help us improve our website and specifically the SSD Act website. And then lastly, we are doing a monthly newsletter, which you may have received. And that's to capture all the things that are going on because as you can see, every month, there's a lot. And it's just the beginning of November and this is everything that's gone on this school year. So I think this snap newsletter is a great way to keep everybody involved in what's all happening across the whole district. All right, next slide. And then we have our after-school programs. So we have culture class, which I've mentioned, and that's kindergarten through 12th grade. We also have four MEHS students participating this year, which I believe is the most we've had.
Yeah, it's been probably four or five years since we've had Medichem students able to participate because of COVID mitigation rules not really lining up across districts. So this is our first year returning with Edgemont students as well. And we've got four students signed up so far. And we've got four students signed up so far. And I would just wanted to say that Chola Moll over at Edgum has done a great job of connecting us to the students who are really interested in learning a little bit more about the Thinget culture. So she's been a great kind of bridge.
Thank you. Yeah, so culture class is happening two days a week for all those grade levels. So we split it up Monday through Thursday. And then we also have a culmination event, December 2nd, MA 12, that I will send the follow-up emails on as we get closer. We're also hosting new this year is Open Studio, second through 12th grade. So that's a chance for students to come during their off culture class days and share in arts, hang out, have a safe space. And then we're also doing drumming on Fridays and that's second through 12th grade. It's normally been sixth through 12th grade, so expanding it into second to 12th grade has been exciting. And then lastly is STA grandchildren's room. The district is not funding this, but we fully support it and often collaborate. They, this room is helping support sixth through 12th grade specifically with their academics, social, emotional and cultural support. And one thing that we wanted to note is that they are doing a lot of events for Native American Heritage Month. And Ms. Jucon will be sharing a event calendar for the month. And then also specifically a QR code signup for students to sign up for events happening in the grandchildren's room. And to go off of that a little bit too, there's two new positions that were hired to support the grandchildren's room, which are the CA Student Support Service positions. And so they've been working closely with me and Jucon and making sure that our students are, this room is really for them. So I'm excited to see it grow even more over the next few years. So lastly, I was just going to share some highlights over the last several months. So first is the Snap Summer Camps. We had six camps this summer, first through 12th grade. We explored harvesting, processing, stewardship, salmon, podcasting, language, stop motion. We had collaborations with Sika Trail Works, Alaska State Council on the Arts, Rassism Foundation, Sika School District and Sika Tribe of Alaska. I have some photos up here of students exploring podcasting together, helping each other, going out to Mosquito Cove, harvesting. Mr. Charlie is leading them in form line and they're listening to stories. Did you want to share anything?
I just wanted to share one of my favorite aspects of the summer program this year was the culmination event at the end of each camp. So our camps are generally just four or five days, just the afternoons. But one of the highlights for me has been that the Friday afternoon is really a family day. And so a lot of the photos you're seeing happening out at Kajahine are actually students and families were welcomed. And so a lot of, almost, geez, most of our Fridays were spent with families. And I think that helped us build a great foundation for the school year as well.
Yes, and so these camps are right now run by staff who also run our in-school and after-school programming. So something I like to share with people is that we are year-round and very busy. There's never a slow time. We have to be really intentional to make slow time in our department. Otherwise, we'd be going non-stop every single year. So we try to put in time for us to slow down a little bit. But reality is that the staff that I work with, they are doing things year-round and it is a lot full schedule. So it's pretty neat to see six camps come together with the same staff. That last summer was a big accomplishment for us. All right, next slide. The next highlight I wanted to share was just on the school year in general, what we've been doing the last several, last two months, three months. And I wanted to share this quote that came from a parent from one of our classes. And I think it's really important, personally, it's very important because I feel like oftentimes I've been told I'm not native enough to learn the culture or I don't look native enough. And so knowing that that's something that I have heard, it's something our students are still hearing. And it was really neat to hear this quote come from this parent that just shares how much it means to them that the culture is accessible within the school day, not just where they have to be native enough or after school. So the parent says, "I have no info to get him a CIB or help him connect on that level to his heritage. Having worked for tribes for years, I know and respect the importance of being connected and centered in culture." But he is getting this in your class. When he talks about your class, he is happy. And so this quote shares that the student doesn't have anything that legally says that he is native, but very much is and gets to have that culture and that feeling of belonging in his classroom because we've all made it possible for these classes to be accessible in school day. And so going off of that, I wanted to share a few things that are happening. You'll see two photos of student artwork. And that was from Mr. Mark Sixpey's classes at the high school. And he currently is teaching at UAS in this beautiful room at UAS. So students get to go over there for his class. And then Caitlin Woolsey, who is our traditional ecological knowledge teacher at the high school, has allowed kids to explore harvesting, processing, and so they may jam together. And then in the middle picture, they are listening to Mr. Chuck Miller talk about his experience podcasting. And then they recently, last week, invited a bunch of us in to listen to their podcasts. And so it's a very neat experience. And then the other picture is a student beading in the Pacific High School Life Skills class.
Her very first pair of earrings and they turned out amazing.
You can see them right above the triangle there. And then we have Representative Phil Tola's speech with the three high schools, which again, I wanted to read how incredible that was. I wasn't there that day, but as a district SSD alum, I'd never once got the chance to be with all three schools. And so seeing this happen now for these students, I think is really incredible and would love to see this continue in the future. All right, next slide. And then last is just another side of some pictures of things happening those last few months. We have students using the grandchildren's room, students out after school and culture class on the trails harvesting. And then we have students participating in NYO during Indigenous Peoples' Day and the family cruise happening where they took an almarine boat out.
I just wanted to share that both center photos are around the KGHD students gathering tea. And so the week after that, they had a tea party where they got to taste the two different teas that they harvested and processed.
So this is a foreshadow, I guess, to when we come back again and share where we're going. We have some very big grants wrapping up and losing a lot of that funding has made us question, what do we prioritize as a district? Where are we going? Because if we have to own this and we don't have funding coming in, what pieces do we want to make sure stick in our district? And so last spring, Jessica Christensen and I hosted a meeting with staff throughout the district and STA staff to come together and talk about in arts, culture and technology within those three realms. What is it that we want to keep? What is it that we want to say we really value this and this is what matters? And so it's a lot to read, so I don't expect us to do it right now. But I did want to share with you that what we're doing going forward and all the things we're putting in place now and this year is out of this, this vision that came from staff. So in December, when we share more, we'll capture a little bit more of where we're going in response to what we've heard and talk about all these elements more. And I will send this vision board to you all individually, so you can look at it as well. And with that, this is really important to me. Again, as a district alumni, I didn't get a chance to learn the language in the school. I was very into sports and so I never had the opportunity to even opt into Snap classes. So I didn't learn the language. And so now as an adult, I get to learn it. And so I'm going to say this to you, but I hope you know that Ms. Jucon is there helping me learn the language, but I also invite you all to try saying these words too. If I can do it, you can do it. And it's okay to not say it right. So, "Ganash chis ahe yis aki." Thank you for listening.
Are there any questions? I just want to say, you guys, before you guys leave, seeing your presentation is very heartwarming for myself. I had a very similar experience going up with you. There was hardly any cultural education within the schools. Actually, my experience was very crude. They'd say, "Are you native?" And if you were, you stood up. And they're like, "Okay, now go learn about yourself." And we'd leave the room and we'd spend 15 minutes learning something that someone read in a book. So you're very in-depth, very well put together presentation of your hard work. That's definitely going out into the community and being passed down through generations within the schools and into the homes of our families is very well and very much appreciated. So, "Mase kaya." All right, going on to item 11, Board Member Reports. Mr. Moore, do you have a report?
No.
Ms. Moore?
I like that, but I had some notes, so I better just say them. So I had the opportunity to attend the AASB retreat with all of you. So got signed in one, that one day and then started the retreat right away. So that was great orientation and I continue to get oriented and learn the processes and policies. I will attend one day of the conference up in Anchorage and then I'll be at my niece's state swim, swimming. So, and then I meet with Mandy Summers of Pacific High School tomorrow. Oh, and I just wanted to say I attended the regional swim meet last weekend and it was just an exciting environment to be in. Very proud of all of the swim team, swim teams, but it was nice to see the camaraderie that our, our swimmers with, displayed with each other, but also the support they, they provided to all the other swimmers. It was just very heartwarming, but very exciting, exciting atmosphere. So, thank you.
Thank you. It sounds exciting. Mr. Kevan? Thank you for your report, by the way. Mr. Kevan?
Yeah, I think like Melanie, I just really enjoyed the opportunity to have the, the board retreat the other weekend. Great opportunity for us to just connect and kind of build that teamwork or get to know each other and how we can work well together. I'm also really excited about some of the priorities we've set. In particular, you know, around, around the budget and looking long-term at our budget and budget processes. And really, really looking forward to working with Mitch and the staff to kind of tackle some of that and bring some ideas back to the board for, for full consideration. And, and just lastly, Mandy, Summer already mentioned in her report, but the class I'd volunteered to co-teach with Matt Groen, the government class at Pacific High, wrapped up a week and a half ago or so. And I just want to, it was such a great opportunity for me. And so just wanted to thank Pacific High, the students there, the staff there for welcoming me into the building and, and making that class such, such a great time. Matt and I, we realized kind of towards the end of the class, what it, what the class, you know, really boiled down to is, is that, excuse me, we wanted to give, we wanted to give the students there, we wanted to give them the knowledge, the skills and the confidence to be able to engage in the public processes that affect their lives. So the class was based around government, Alaska government standards. We also use the Deeds Career Cluster for public administration and management, cultural standards for teachers, ELA standards in particular, those for, for informational texts and speaking and listening. And then SEL, social emotional learning standards as well. The core competencies, the way Pacific High works is generally the classes have about three core competencies they're focused on. And what we really focused on was, was developing personal identity, social identity and teamwork, and then inquiry and research. You know, and just setting those mindsets, letting students explore who they are, what their values are, what experiences have shaped their lives, what they want to see for the future, giving them opportunities for teamwork to build that social identity. What is their relationship to the larger community of Sika? And inquiry and research, just setting that inquiry mindset of always asking questions, questions leading to more questions, putting on that analytical, you know, those kind of analytical lenses and, and seeing themselves as researchers. So Clover, who was here earlier, was one of the students. Aubrey, who was recognized last week and just so many great students. And I'll just, and by really thanking the students for welcoming me into their school and for trusting me, trusting one another, trusting their teachers to, to share their ideas, you know, and, and explore all these themes. And so I just again, really appreciate Pacific High and everything that they do and the, the model of education that they're providing. So, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Kevan. Mr. Keppler?
It's hard to follow that, but I as well, the board retreat was excellent as always. It's my second one. Lots of great information. Timmy Tullis from the board is an excellent presenter. So lots of great information there. And I am looking forward to the AASB annual conference coming up. I think everybody's leaving for that tomorrow, so we're all be there for that. Just looking forward to that and very thankful to be where I am.
Thank you, Mr. Keppler. Felix, would you like to, do you have a report?
Yes, so I wanted to take this time to first explain sort of more about that position that Ms. Lundvik brought up, that I was selected for by interview. So I was selected to be the junior speed rep, student representative to the State Board of Education Early Development for the State of Alaska. In that position, what that means is that I will be one of the students representing all students of Alaska to that board. And next year, I'll be sitting as the senior representative and be a full voting member of the board of education for the State of Alaska. And so that is a pretty incredible opportunity, I would say, for me. And I'm very grateful that I had the opportunity and to be able to be on this board with all of you is extremely helpful in learning sort of what we can value and prioritize when it comes to what all the school board, what all of our school districts need across the state and what we need. And so sort of going into this school board conference that we're going to over the next few days, I hope to sort of with you all, connect with some of the other districts and learn sort of all about the different, you know, sizes and the different ways that education occurs in the State of Alaska so that I can have a better idea and better view of how I can properly represent all of Alaska to that board. So I'm very excited for that opportunity and I can't wait to go up there and use that as a learning opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your report, Felix. All right, so I will give my board report. I will reiterate that our time with Timmy Tullis was very well spent at the board retreat. I enjoyed getting to know the board members a little bit more. And we did, as Mr. Kevan stated, we got to hone in on what our goals were and what we were going to work towards this coming year. I was able to stop by and visit Sika High School a couple of times. And I, every single time I visit there, I, I'm just amazed with the student body and Sandra and all of the work that those teachers are doing in that building. I was able to go to the music production, the concert. That was amazing as well. It was just amazing to see a room full of students together again, playing music. I love and support the arts, so you know, it was just a great event to be a part of. Hearing about the three schools together warms my heart because again, in my time, we did not have that. We had such a thing called Battle of the Bridge. So, you know, it's really great to hear that that is going away and that we are building bridges instead of battling them. So, you know, I was able to. So, you know, I was able to speak at the assembly and talk about the upcoming Student Activity Fund sessions that will be coming up November 10th from 5:30 to 7:30 at Keet Gushiheen Multipurpose Room. And again, let's see, yeah, that's the one coming up. So yeah, I spoke to that at the assembly meeting and I believe that's it. So yeah, I'm looking forward to the ASB conference this time around. You know, it's just a great event to come together and listen to what the other school districts are going through and kind of coming together and seeing Alaska's school districts as a whole and also gaining more and more information on how to apply that to our district. So we will be traveling tomorrow and it should be a good time of learning. That is my report. Moving on to item 12, Administrative Reports. Can hand that out to you?
Thank you very much. I'll run through the, the reports that we have and then I'll have my superintendent's update. Just starting off, we've got the budget update. You'll see your monthly revenue and expenses report. We'll go into a little more details later on in the agenda when we talk about the budget revision that we have. But if there are any questions on the monthly revenue reports, I'd always like to make sure that everybody has that in front of them. What I really wanted to spend a couple of minutes, you know, a little bit of time with focusing on is just the enrollment numbers too and talking about that. We did actually have the finish of the October count. So as you know, that's the 20 days in October that the State Department of Education Early Development uses to identify our average daily membership that ended on Friday, October 28th. When we look at the numbers that you have in front of you, you'll see that our demographic enrollment breakdown for the schools is for total 1,116 students. So we are under with the enrollment, the head count, if you will, for the, you know, what we projected 1,125. But I did just want to remind the board, when they state and when we calculate the actual percentage of enrollment, we do look at percentages of students. And a good example to try to demonstrate this is when you look at Reach Homeschool. Reach Homeschool indicates that we have 37 students that are enrolled at Reach Homeschool. But in the foundation formula, Reach Homeschool only counts as 90%. So each student only counts as 90% of a student when it looks at the percentage of their enrollment towards our average daily membership. And so what you'll see is in those 37 students, we actually for the count only get to count 33.3% of those students. And so that's a good way of demonstrating, you know, how the count looks at percentages as well. And then we do have some students that are part-time enrollment in the district and they might be enrolled in another, you know, correspondence program through the state. It might be 60% with SSD and then 40% with another correspondence program in the state. And so it takes some time for us to go through. Once the October count is finished, we go through and submit the, the numbers that we have to the state. And the state goes through and looks at a statewide perspective at different districts, different programs and see if there's any overlap in our students. So we won't have that final count for a little bit of time yet. But I did want to just give a little bit of an overview of that count. It is finished. We'll be submitting those numbers to the state. And just to make sure that I do let the board know that we are expecting that our final numbers, once reviewed by the Department of Ed, will come in under the projected enrollment number of 1,125. So we will not hit that enrollment number that we were looking at when we built the projections. But we do, and we'll talk a little bit about this more in the budget, you know, we are hopeful that, that number we're, we're shooting for, you know, around 14, 13 below that, around the 1,111, 1,112, but we won't have that final number until the state goes through and does the final review of the numbers that we put through. So I just wanted to kind of provide that overview. So were there any questions on kind of enrollment? All right. With that, I'm going to jump into my superintendent's report. So we had a lot of fun yesterday in SSD. I had the opportunity to take a photo with a young aviator, Maverick. He goes by from Baranoff. And we were also joined by his sister, Jedi, if you get a chance to see that. Those were just getting a chance to go through the schools and seeing just some of the fun that was taking place. I didn't include the picture, but I was able to locate Waldo, who looked suspiciously like Principal Demmerck's. And so that was a lot of fun. The other thing, I talked about this a little bit earlier, but I wanted to show the picture. Keet Gushiheen and Sue Ross at Keet Gushiheen put together the most amazing spooky gymnasium, spooky maze, complete with an inflatable slide. I just had to include some of these pictures and, you know, some of the fun that the students were having. And it just, she does this every year and it just was amazing to see, but I really wanted to highlight lower right-hand side of that picture with that slide. The slide was huge. It was almost to the top of the gym and the kids were climbing up there. And the, the really exciting thing for me, and I had to wear a suit today, but it's going to be up all this week and it's rated for adults. So tomorrow I'm planning on stopping by and actually taking a slide down the slide because it actually looked like a lot of fun. The kids were having a blast. But there was just, it was just really fun to see and it was just a great opportunity for the students to just really enjoy, you know, being active. PE class, you want them to be active, but they were active and having fun and that's so important. The pictures, thank you, the pictures do not do it justice. So it really is impressive. So we also had, October is a very busy month for teachers. And so I always like to highlight some of our schools as well that didn't get a chance to present to you. You know, for Keet Gushiheen, fifth grade students and Mrs. Tullis' class made homemade salsa to raise money for our local Humane Society. Scientists from the Science Center also visited and actually revisited many of our classes this month. At Keet Gushiheen, students participated in squid dissections, animal adaptations and learned about bird habitats. So scientists actually came in and also spoke about the hazards of pollution on our marine environment. In addition, the bagpipers from the Seattle Fire Department came to Keet. They were at the playground during, you know, one of the playground sessions and lunch on Alaska Day as part of the celebrations. And students had a chance to listen to the bagpipers and try out for the, try out the bass drum. So a number of students, as you can see, got a chance to beat the bass drum and man, the smile on their faces was just fantastic to see. Other happenings at Keet this month included watching the Army Band perform at the PAC and 4H Club for Keet students began as our community rec program. Keet also had a fun Halloween and are looking forward to meeting with families for parent-teacher conferences this week. Really about the only thing I have to say, and I think all the students at Blatchley Middle School would agree, last Thursday, Blatchley hosted their Halloween dance. And to say students were excitement is a understatement. It was a quote unquote, big deal for the students and the staff. Over 230 of the students attended and most of the staff were there as well. And I really, it just, I mean, middle school dances are just so much fun because the students just come together, they socialize, they have such a good time. And it was just, it's great to be able to provide that for our students again. Well, actually would also like to just give a quick shout out to the Elks Club for allowing them to have a benefit dinner fundraiser for the schools last Sunday, October 23rd. Funds will go to student activities, clubs and sports. You heard a lot from Principal Lundvik earlier about some of the activities and I just wanted to highlight a couple of other things. And I really just want to thank the SICA Sentinel for their continued coverage of our SSD athletics and activities. We really love to see our students celebrated. We have, of course, have our cross-country team who were recognized earlier for their amazing season. Our Sika High School Drama Debate and Forensics Team, or DDF as everyone likes to refer to them, continues its strong season. And Principal Lundvik was right, I got a complete listing of all the awards that they had at their last meet. And it would take way too much time to go through because they just, just reward after reward after recognition. It just is impressive to see just how great our DDF team is and how well they're doing. We also have here a picture of the Lady Wolf Sea Wolf seniors. And as again, it was said, the Sika High School is hosting volleyball regions. It'll be here, you know, through this week. Some other news, wrestling is ongoing. Sika High School hosted over 170 students from 11 Southeast districts this last weekend for the wrestling meet. And as you heard, we're heading to ACS for the ACS or to Anchorage for the ACS tournament this weekend. Felix Myers and Kaylee Orlando returned from Wasilla after a three-day Alaska Association of Student Government Conference. You've heard all about the great things that are happening there and just want to congratulate the students again for their recognitions. Swimmers, of course, are competing in state this coming weekend and we do have six swimmers there. And I just want to take this opportunity, not only to thank, you know, Principal Lundvik, Rich Crouppa and Principal Cardy for all the hard work and dedication. I really want to thank them because a lot of the activities and the sports, they're doing these things after hours, you know, after the workday and they're there until, you know, 9:30, 10 o'clock, sometimes later. You know, just dedicating their time to the students and I just really appreciate it. Going to the wrestling match this weekend, you know, there's, you know, Tyler's at the gate, making sure people are coming in and, you know, Crouppa's going around, making sure everything's running smooth. And it's just, it's amazing teamwork, bringing them all together, support our students and our athletes. And so I just wanted to take that moment to thank them. In addition, we had Sika High School, of course, had the 19 students, seven choir and 12 band participate in the Southeast Alaska Honors Music Festival in Haynes last week. I got a chance to go through and watch all of the performances and if you don't know my past history, I used to run the Music and Fine Arts Department for the district office, was an orchestra teacher. And the performances were fantastic and I had to include a QR code in here. So when you see the QR code, go on that QR code, it'll open up to the website, the YouTube page that has all the performances. They were fantastic. The students did such a great job and it was just, just, it was really great to see that caliber of performance and students coming together and just spend a few days, they had the music, rehearsed the music, come together and just put on such an amazing concert that sounded just great. And I just, I really encourage everyone to go in there and watch that. And I also wanted to give a shout out to Theo Everson, one of Sika's own, who had a flute feature in one of the pieces. And so it was really nice. I would encourage everyone to go on and watch those performances. They really were great. As we talked about, the state of Alaska has a new statewide assessment, AKSTAR, that was introduced last spring and has replaced PEAKS. Students in grades three through nine took the assessment last spring as part of a linking study between the MAP assessment, which we're, we were doing previously and will continue to provide for students. And the AKSTAR is a new summative assessment for the state of Alaska. The results of AKSTAR and the AK Science Assessment for grades five, eight and 10 will be published on the state website on November 10. Schools will be distributing the AKSTAR student reports to parents by December 9th. The National NAEP test results recently came out on October 24th. This was the headline from the state, the Department of Education Early Development. And it states, "Amid steep nationwide declines, Alaska maintains achievement level in reading and declines in math." And I just wanted to remind everyone, we talked about this at the last meeting, that we don't receive any district level results from NAEP. Only the very large districts in blue here do in California like LA, Atlanta and Denver. NAEP doesn't give us any data on our district specifically or any comparison of our districts with other districts. It's also a common misperception that NAEP tests all of Alaska students. Instead, it tests a small sample of Alaska students, so approximately 1,600 students in Alaska in 210 schools in grade fourth, eighth and 12th are tested. We continue to make progress on our community-driven Sika School District strategic plan. And I really want to take this opportunity to focus this month on strategy number six, which is we will expand and remove participation barriers for students. The passing of proposition one will have a significant positive impact on advancing this strategy. The district has provided information to the public on how we might expand opportunities and move participation barriers for students in extracurricular activities with the passing of proposition one. How we might be able to provide some of these expanded opportunities are outlined here. And I want to just take a moment to kind of read through them. Establishing a student activity scholarship fund to assist families with activities, participation fees and other costs associated with participation in student activities. Eligibility for scholarship funds would be established through the already existing free and reduced price meal application process. In other words, students who qualify for free and reduced meal prices would automatically be eligible for student activity scholarship fund. The other area we're looking at, you know, possibilities for the use of the student activities fund. Reducing student activity participation costs by capping a student activities participation fee to one yearly fee rather than a per-activity fee. Currently, students pay a fee for each activity from 200 to 400 per activity. This change to a yearly fee from a per-activity fee would expand opportunities for students to participate in multiple activities. We also look at, you know, in conjunction with fundraising, supporting teams' regular season activity and travel. Travel for students who qualify for regional and state events and travel for students who qualify for free and reduced price meals. Supporting non-athletic activities participation at middle school and elementary school levels. And of course, we really want to hear from parents, communities, staff and other public through public listening sessions and the advisory committee that we're looking at forming. And so we are actually having those. We actually held our first listening session on the new student activities fund last week and we have another one scheduled on October 10th. The listening sessions are open to everyone and the goal is to hear ideas on the use of the student activities fund. We also have a survey up on our website under the Quick Links header on the front page of our website. And you can also just scan this QR code and it'll take you right to the survey as well. At that survey, you are able to rank the ideas in the previous two slides on the survey. You will also have the opportunity to provide other suggestions you might have as far as uses for the student activities fund. Our preliminary survey responses include a strong preference for students for the use of the fund directly for students, which is exactly in line with what the assembly talked about and the districts initial ideas are focusing on. Key pumps for Blatchley have started to arrive. So this is exciting, good news for everyone. Two are here. Our contractor has received the shipping bill from AML for the others. So we're hoping that they're getting here quickly. The photo is from this morning. So the photo that you see here is from this morning. It was a little dark outside, so it's a little bit hard to see. But our contractor is pulling out the old heat pumps today in preparation for installing the new ones. As I said in my update last month, he was able to Band-Aid one of the units and get some heat going in the building. So the building has heat, has had some heat in the interim, but we're excited for that process to be starting. As we talked about earlier in the fall, SSD submitted an application for the EPA Electric Bus Rebate Program. The application submitted a total of nine buses for a rebate. We were excited about the opportunity, but realized it might not happen this year because SSD was not considered a quote-unquote priority district for the program. We did get the results of that and Wrangle was considered a priority district and they were selected and are receiving, you know, received the rebate. Along with Valdez, we are on the waitlist. So if another district drops out of the program or there is some other issue, we might still qualify, but it's likely a long shot for this year. This is though, it's important to say, this is just the first round of funding to aid in the transition to electric buses. The district will continue to have more opportunities and to apply for future funding. Always wanted to kind of, want to highlight that SSD is still looking for substitutes. So please consider applying to serve as a substitute. Once you've applied and been accepted, you can set your preferences for schools and classes in our system. So the district increased substitute pay last year as well. And so we're really working to get the word out to anyone who is interested and we're encouraging teachers to talk to friends and family to see if they know someone who would be interested in subbing. If anyone is interested in only subbing at a certain grade level or school or for a specific teacher, this is something that we can accommodate. So please contact the district office if you're interested in subbing. Finally, we'll be starting our budget process soon. And while we're not seeing the same effects on our funding from declining enrollment as other districts, we are not immune from the funding crisis affecting Alaska schools. This article described, quote, "The same Alaska-wide problem. Most school funding is derived by the state and the state's per-student funding formula has failed to keep pace with inflation," end quote. As my colleague, the superintendent of the Kenai Peninsula School District stated, or states in the article, quote, "Everything has gone up. Liability insurance, healthcare insurance have been huge drivers and state funding hasn't kept up with it," end quote. That's the same situation in our district. As a community gets going, or as a process gets going, we'll be holding listening sessions to hear from the staff and the community, all that is coming down that road and we'll be, you know, getting more information about that. But I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows that Sika will not be the unicorn. We will not be the only Alaska district that escapes hard budget decisions this year. And so I just want And so I just wanted to have that conversation. And lastly, in other announcements, we have no school November 3rd for conferences and November 4th for an in-service day. The second Student Activities Fund Listening Session, like I said earlier, is scheduled on Thursday, November 10th from 5:30 to 7 at Kikushihin. And also, please consider volunteering in your schools, in the classroom or on the playground. And if you have any questions about how to volunteer, please call your school for more information and schedule time to come in. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Any questions for Frank? Seeing that. Moving on to item 13, new business, 13A. This is a budget revision. Could I get a motion to approve agenda item 13A budget revision?
I move to approve the FY23 budget revision as presented.
Make it a second.
I second that.
Is there any public comment? Right. Is there any board comments? Motion on the table is to approve agenda item 13A budget revision as presented. Since there is money involved, there needs to be a roll call. Done.
Todd Geppler.
Yes.
Tristan Gavon.
Yes.
Melanie Board.
Yes.
Mitch Moore.
Yes.
Blossom Teal Olsen.
Yes.
Motion pass.
All right. Moving on to item 13B. Board Bylaw 9110 is being amended to add a student representative from Pacific High School to the Sika School. To the, I mean, let me start this over. Board Bylaw 9110 is being amended to add a student representative from Pacific High School to school board membership. Can I have a motion to approve BB 9110 board membership on its first reading?
I move to approve the proposed change to Board Bylaw 9110 first reading.
The motion has been made and make it a second.
I second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Board Bylaw 9110 board membership on first reading. Is there any public comment? Is any board comment?
Yes. I would just, as I know that we talked about in our policy meeting, I just want to say it out loud once again at our, at this meeting. As the student representative for the, for Sika High School, I'm in full support of adding a new member from Pacific High School. I think having more student voices and hearing different perspectives and also giving that opportunity to those students is very important when it comes to including everyone in that opportunity. And I'm very excited to have a new member to work with as well.
I agree. Thank you, Felix. I would like to add that I wholeheartedly agree. And I know that this is the first reading and hopefully in the near future, we will have more student input. Any more board comment? Seeing none. The motion on the table is to approve Board Bylaw 9110 board membership on first reading. Any opposition? Seeing none. The motion passes. Moving on to 13C, or actually, we skipped that. Moving on to 13D. Review CARES ARP funding.
Just want to give everybody a quick review. This is a breakdown of CARES funding. I just wanted to make sure that we highlighted it and made sure everybody was aware of the breakdown in how CARES funding is being used at this time. A couple of highlights we wanted to, you know, point out, make sure the board was aware of, we're looking at the, if you look through the spreadsheet on page two, you'll see a breakdown and, you know, where the estimated budget for SER2 and SER3. And as you can see, we have spent down SER2 funding. There's no more SER2 balance remaining for the CARES funding for SER2. When you look at SER3, you see the estimated budget that's broken down and spent and encumbered. A couple of highlights that we want to just kind of point out is we do have and reduced the amount for AmeriCorps members from $150,000, which is what we had originally to $60,000. We have just not been able to find all the AmeriCorps members that we wanted, but we do have two. And we're hoping that we still can find maybe a couple more. So we did leave $60,000 in there for four members, but at this point, we've only spent $30,000. And then the other highlights, just wanted to point out, which falls under the, kind of the last half of the page, SER funding recommendations. We are looking to fund, what is a matching grant for the New Vision Grants, $4,000 to provide professional development on culture and arts for our administrators. And so we're excited to be able to provide some professional development for our administrators in the district to attend a conference to learn more about, as part of the New Visions Grant, as well as Artisan Residence. Wanted to use again, a matching grant, $15,000 to be able to provide and support artists and residents in the Sika School District. This is something that we have been, you know, we just have not had the opportunity to have as much artisan residence with the pandemic. And so this is, I think, a great use of being able to take COVID-19 funds and use it to try to address some of the loss of learning and loss of opportunity that our students had during the pandemic. And I see this is a great way of being able to use the funds to do a matching grant to be able to bring and provide artists in schools. And so those are two recommendations that we have for the use of the SER3 money, the remaining. And then with those, the way the budget's out right now, that would leave a remainder of $102,731, which could go down if we find two more AmeriCorps members. And with that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Frank, for that update. Moving on to 13E. This is, 13E is, was added to allow the board to discuss a new order of agenda. As, you know, we met with Timmy Tullis from ASB at our board retreat. Just to give you some background, if you're watching in the audience. And she had suggested moving our agenda around to accommodate families, particularly to the persons to be heard. And as we discussed it in our retreat, there was some of us that we were open to possibly changing the order of our agenda to accommodate persons to be heard, to set a general time so that the public would know that around this time, you may speak to the board. At this time, we do not have that setting. And, and so we're having this discussion tonight whether or not we want to stick with our agenda the way it is or if we want to move towards the agenda model that Timmy set out for us or presented to us. So, Board, do you have anything to say to that? Are you open to change or do you like things the way that they are?
I'm just trying to dust off the comments. She was mentioning maybe putting it forward closer to the beginning of the meeting. Because right now it sits at item eight after recognition. Yeah. Yeah, I, I'm moving it forward would be great. I have no objection to that. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I'm wondering, because I know one of the suggestions was, because the persons to be heard at number eight, that's currently on our agenda here, is the persons to be heard on opportunities not on the agenda. And I think the discussion, as I recall it, was having an item for, or having a persons to be heard for items on the agenda at the beginning of the meeting and removing the persons to be heard from each agenda item. And I've been reflecting on that quite a bit since, since our retreat. And I would, what I would be in favor of would be adding a persons to be heard on items on the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. But I would want to keep the persons to be heard within each agenda item. So that we're providing two opportunities. If people want to stay through the meeting and speak on the agenda item as it comes up, they have that opportunity. But we also expand the opportunity for public comment to allow at the beginning of the meeting for those people who, who don't want to sit through the entire meeting or who have children or who have jobs. So, so I would be in favor of that. I think any expansion of public input is a good thing, so.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Gavon. That's, you articulated what I had not. So thank you for that. Ms. Board, do you have an opinion?
I guess just clarification then of where it would go. Where, where are you thinking, Tristan? But yes, I am in favor if I'm open to that of changing or adding another persons to be heard.
I think right now it would be, since this is a discussion topic, we're primarily discussing whether or not we're open to moving it. If we are in favor of moving it, it would move to an action item in December. And then at that time, we would, we would clarify the exact order when, Mr. Moore.
I'm open to moving it. I always feel bad for the people that have to sit through to the end.
Yeah, it does seem interesting. I, I don't know the reason why it has been placed where it is in our agenda. I think moving it up would, I'd say, make more sense just because then we can hear kind of that public input and then get on with the rest of our business and then people can leave if they need to. And yeah.
I would plan more approach rules. I tend to do that a lot. Mr. Hauser.
I just wanted to highlight a couple of things and as we discussed this in the board thinks about it more, one thing I wanted to point out is, you know, we do have recognitions on item number seven, if you will, as you look at the number agenda that we have today. And we have the Hall of Fame Students of the Month. We recognize, you know, sometimes staff, sometimes students, additional students. Depending on what the agenda items might be for persons to be heard for agenda items, if we do add an additional person to be heard for, you know, agenda items earlier in the program and we move it up before recognitions for our, you know, kind of student recognitions, that will require then students to stay later while persons have heard, persons to be heard takes place, which depending on the items that they want to speak on, it could be just one person, it could be many people. And so I just want to make sure that if we do shift, I think it's worth us thinking about the impact it might have on our recognitions. And do we want to consider moving recognitions maybe before the board meeting and not make it part of the actual board meeting? But maybe 15, 20 minutes before the board meeting, we recognize students and then we start the board meeting. Then we have our normal board meeting. And so students can come in, we still get to recognize them, but it adjusts it and moves a little bit to where we don't. We still want to get that public input, but we also don't move it in a way that it has a, it keeps students away from doing their homework and, you know, spending time with families and making sure they get to bed on time, you know, so they're refreshed and ready to go in the morning.
Any additions from Mr. Hauser's comments?
I like it. I feel worse for them than anybody else.
I mean, personally, I would, I wouldn't mind coming early for the recognitions. I think that would even be more helpful for the students as well because that wouldn't allow them to go home and eat and have family time and keep a schedule that would be more helpful for them. Mr. Geppler?
Yeah, that's, that is a good point. It would be more comfortable perhaps for the students, be less formal. Your meeting has that formal kind of vibe to it and students maybe don't really enjoy that formal vibe. So perhaps at the beginning of meeting, I am part of the meeting, but at the beginning of meeting, that's, that's a great idea.
Yeah, just to add to that, from the student perspective, I know many students would not want to sit through sort of the approval and all of our normal meeting procedures, just knowing high schoolers and elementary schoolers too especially, having to sit through that. So I think having those recognitions for would be reasonable for many students.
All right. Well, I think we've discussed moving our agenda around. I think we're in favor and open to that. So we will note that down and discuss it at our agenda meeting. Look forward to. Do we need to vote on? No, we don't. Okay. All right. Let's see. Item 14, correspondence and information. Seeing none. Moving on to item 15, future agenda items, upcoming events. 15A, ASB's annual conference in Anchorage, November 3rd through the 6th. We are traveling tomorrow, you guys. I, I hope we're all ready. I am not. I, I hope to be rested by then. It should be a good trip. Item 15, Policy Committee Meeting, November 9th at 5:00 PM in the District Office Boardroom. Item 15C, the second Student Activity Fund Listening Session, November 10th from 5:30 to 7:30 in the Keet Gushiheen Multi-Purpose Room. I hope that all families who are interested in giving input and finding out more about that, please attend. We want your input. Last but not least, item 15D, next regular school board meeting will be December 7th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Herken Centennial Hall. With that, make it a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Move to adjourn.
A second.
Second that.
For a second there, I thought, you guys wanted to stay here all night. It's been moved and seconded. Meeting extended 8:59 PM before 9:00 PM.